Okay, we're ready to go. It's the Pennington County Planning Commission meeting of June 9th, 2025. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at their regular meeting on June 17th, 2025, at 10:30 a.m. The Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. If you're the applicant or the applicant's representative, you don't need to fill out one of those forms, but if you're not, you should fill out a form and bring it up to Jerry. Roll call. Looks like everyone's present this morning. Did everyone have a chance to read the minutes of the May 27th meeting?
I did move to approve the minutes of the May 22nd, 2025 meeting of the Pennington County Planning Commission.
May 27th? Yeah, okay.
May 27th, sorry.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the May 27th, 2025 minutes?
Who's seconded that?
Jerry.
Okay.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The Chair would address a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And approval of the consent agenda.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molliter, Planning Director. The following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number four is conditional use permit review, CUR 2157, for Kevin and Deanne Killian to review two primitive seasonal cabins to be used as bunk houses in an agriculture district, and staff recommends approval. Item number five is conditional use permit review, CUR 22-09, for David and Mary Grover to review living in a pole barn or shop building while building a single-family residence in a ranchette district, and staff recommends to end conditional use permit, CUR 22-09, with the applicant's concurrence. Item number six is conditional use permit review, CUR 2244, for Rodney Alexander to review an accessory dwelling unit in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval. And finally, item seven is conditional use permit review, COCUR 24-0017, for Deborah Lalonde to review an accessory dwelling unit in a rural residential district, and staff recommends approval.
Does staff want any items removed from this list?
No.
Okay. Any Commissioners would like anything removed for separate consideration? Chair would address a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I make a motion, Madam Chair, that we discuss item number, agenda item number eight and nine together, but vote on them separately.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to discuss items eight and nine together, but vote on them separately. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Cory? Cody, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Cody's second, Senior Planner. Item eight is rezone, CORZ 25-0007. It's to rezone from agriculture to rural residential district. The applicant and landowner is Travis Graham. Location of the property is 12494 and 12496 Old Hill City Road. Involves 3.86 acres. Current zoning is agriculture with an existing land use residential. Access is off Old Hill City Road, and there is flood plain and floodway on the property. So what the applicants are proposing to do is they're currently plotting the property. There's these two lots. They're just combining them together, but since they're zoned agriculture and don't meet the 10 acres, they lose their grandfathered status for those. So they're rezoning to rural residential, which is what our future land use has, has those lots being. So they're just requesting to go to what our future land use is. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. So staff is recommending approval of CORZ 25-0007. And then the preliminary plan is COPPL 25-0004. Again, it's just to combine those two lots together. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. The staff finds the requests to be in harmony with existing land uses and lot sizes in the area. So staff is also recommending approval of COPPL 25-0004 with conditions.
Are there questions for Cody?
Cody? This is simple. I assume that there's more involved in the total plat there than just the 3.86. I couldn't find it anywhere. How much?
No, I believe that it's going to be 3.86 acres because this is the current lot, CR2. It's not really on there very well, or you can see it very well.
All I was getting at, it sure looks big on the drawing and the layout, and it sure looks more than 3.86. Looks like the little corner is the 3.86, isn't it?
Oh, we can go.
There's a house and a drive-in. If I looked at the picture, if I look at the Old Hill City drawing, it just looks bigger than...
I'll...
It looks like 10 acres when they're breaking three off. To me, I'm just throwing that number out there.
Um, one second. We'll check it. So the larger piece is currently 3.62. And then they're adding 7.9. So I guess it'd end up being almost 5 acres? 62? Yeah, about 4.3 acres, so that must be the typo on there. I will confirm with the surveyor on what the actual acreage is.
Yeah, I couldn't tell from his drawing. It wasn't anything I'm picking on you about. I just couldn't tell. When I read his drawing, I went 3.86. That doesn't fit, what did you call it, scale-wise?
Yeah, I'll confirm with him on that. So I do know that those are current, and they had to dedicate some right-of-way to Old Hill City Road. So currently, it might be that, but when you actually dedicate that right-of-way out there, it might get down to that 3.83, but I'll confirm with the surveyor on that.
And the only reason I brought it up because that would be all we're switching to the rural residential then.
Correct. It's just these two, the bigger piece and the smaller piece, they're both currently zoned ag. And since they're combining those together, they're rezoning both of them to...
Yeah, I just wanted to know how much.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Are there other questions for Cody?
I've got a question. This is just down the road from me. I'm familiar with the property. The little piece that they want to put on, in looking at this plat, they've got a driveway listed in that. Is...I don't think there's anything there, is there?
So it's not to that actual little parcel, it's to the little tri...sorry, wrong map. It's to the little triangle piece that's to this property. This is an access easement that goes through here.
Yeah, right.
So that's where that little driveway goes to, is actually this triangle parcel. I don't know if there's a house or what's there on that parcel, but this is, that parcel's access.
Okay. And then the other thing is clear on the far right on the plat, it shows a small finger for a service through there. Is that actually there at this point? On the one that you've put on for us, right to the right of that, the one you gave us shows, looks like forest service.
Or, that it's zoned forest service?
Yeah, in other words, the one you put on for us, this one. This is what we got from you. And right here, looks like it's forest service, and it's forest service all around it. Is that little piece still there? Right there.
That? So I believe that is just how the picture was taken. That little piece is actually this larger...
I mean, the plat shows it, that's why I wondered.
I think it's just how the surveyor has it drawn out there. It would be this lot, but he just cuts, he has it a little wider. I'm not sure why he did that, but that wouldn't be included in this plat. It would stop right there, and then I think this is just a different lot. Like, he has it lot. I can't read that. My eyes aren't very good today.
Well, there is a house on the lot then to the right, obviously.
Yeah.
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 I was just curious, because there's forest service behind it, and then that little piece came through there. I didn't even know there was one.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Question for Cody. Cody, this has really nothing to do with what the application is for. It's for information that I'm looking for. But in the agenda item nine, then, equalization records, it talks about a portion of the rear of the structure is within the special flood hazard area?
Mm-hmm.
What does that actually mean to that property owner?
So it just means that any modifications or improvements to that structure, that's over 50%, so we call it substantial improvement. So if they remodeled the house, say the house is worth $100,000, and they remodel the house, and it comes to $55,000, they have to make sure that that house actually meets base flood elevation at that point. So it's just saying that the house is actually within...so the way FEMA views it is even if a corner's in, the whole structure's in. So that structure would have to meet our floodplain requirements through our floodplain targets.
I presume, thank you. I presume that that didn't exist, that the flood hazard is encroached on the property over the period of time of nearly 100 years at this point.
Yeah, I'm guessing so. I mean, FEMA and FEMA maps didn't come out until the 80s, and I believe that structure's been there for quite a while.
Yeah.
So they would just have to show that, if they go over that substantial improvement, they just have to show that the structure's above base flood elevation through a floodplain development permit.
Thanks, Cody.
Any other questions?
Just one. We have to vote on these separately.
Yes.
That part you can understand, but what I'm taking at your word on the rezone, follow me, because you're going to catch it up in your rules on the preliminary plat. Follow me? Because on the rezone, there's no conditions. So when your conditions catch my problem of the acreage, because I still can't figure out from the, his, I looked at the one on the preliminary plat too, and I still can't figure out the layout and the total acres. It just doesn't, if you look at the picture and then look, that's the easiest one. They actually have the picture of this property layout on your page. I guess there's no page number, but this one. They're not even shaped the same.
Yeah. So, yeah, I'll work with, Marty Cost on it. But I think what's, like I said, I think what's happening is this shaded area down here...
Yeah.
...is being dedicated into Old Hill City Road. So that acreage is being taken out of the current...
Okay.
...the current acreage. So if it's already, I think we established it's like 4.3. So say that that right-of-way that they had to take out and dedicate in there...
Yeah.
...is .63 or .6, then it gets you down to that 3.80.
But then I saw her map with the belly in the property, follow me? It just, some of it just didn't, they don't even look the same. And it doesn't look, I can't figure out where that part of it, if there's just part of it. And if I had some idea of the total acreage, then I could decide whether it's part of it or whatnot. It just, the whole thing looks uncomfortable. You know what I mean? If you look at these two just side by side, you couldn't, you swear that the drawing from the survey guide doesn't match our map layout.
Yeah, because I think, because I think what's happening is this, you're taking, we'll say, starting at that corner and going straight across to this corner, you're taking this portion of the property out for Old Hill City Road. So you lose that curve a little bit, because you're taking that right-of-way out.
I guess, my original statement is that for the rezone, theoretically, I should vote against it because I'm not in agreement, I can't figure out where the land at. But I know you're going to pick it back up in the preliminary because of the conditions. So, I just wanted to...
And that's something we can address with the surveyor before it goes to the...
Please do.
...the board to confirm the acreage.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
The Chair would address a motion on item number eight.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept rezone on CORZ 25-0007.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve CORZ 25-0007. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Chair would address a motion on item number nine.
I move to approve preliminary plan, COPPL 25-0004 with, I think it's four conditions.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve COPPL 25-0004 with four conditions. Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we discuss items, agenda items number 10, 11, and 12 together, but vote on them separately.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Item, go ahead, Megan.
Megan Talmitch, Planner. Agenda item 10 and 11 is a comprehensive plan amendment, COCA 25-0006, and rezone, CORZ 25-0008, to change the current land use and future land use to rural residential. And that is part of a larger preliminary plan to subdivide this property owned by Jones Ranch into four lots. The surrounding land use and future land use, or the surrounding current and future land use are in harmony with the requested zoning change. It isn't the entire 100-plus acres. It's actually about two acres that is being rezoned. Currently, Lot 3 of Jones Ranch subdivision is five acres. The preliminary plan will make it seven acres, so that additional two acres needs to be rezoned to rural residential. Staff recommends approval as the surrounding of the rezone and comprehensive plan, as the surrounding land use is in harmony with the request. Staff also recommends approval of the preliminary plan as all of the, all the requirements of the layout plan have been met, minus the right-of-way dedication, which I'm working with the surveyor on, to figure out how exactly we denote that. Yes, I believe that's all.
Okay. Do you hear, are there questions for Megan on this?
Yeah, I have a question. So the staff feels comfortable that even though most of the property on the north side of Highway 44 is ag, that this spot of rural residential is consistent with planning?
Yes. The current Lot 3 is rural residential and everything, Caputa, yeah, that Caputa is just so close, so we have that suburban residential, and then we also have rural residential and the future land use as well.
So there are indications that, like, people want to live in a rural residential place, and that's how this will develop and kind of fold into Caputa?
Yes.
Okay. I just wondered, because I wondered how far out, you know, in the other directions it goes. I'm assuming it's all just ag around there.
Yeah. Northern is ag.
At east?
Straight, yeah. Pretty much everywhere except south is just that ag.
Okay. John?
I understand there's a cell phone, there's a cell tower on the property. How much land does that take?
So that will be one acre. The applicant has submitted a variance to allow a one-acre lot in agriculture zoning district. It will still have to meet agriculture setbacks, but it is considered a utility. There will be no other uses on that. They've included a no-build easement for the tower height. They've taken the necessary steps through our ordinance to allow that cell tower lot.
Okay.
Okay, so you've got 219 no-build around it.
Yes.
What about the property, not this one, but the property to the east? Do they have to, I mean, are we forcing those people also to have a no-build on their property?
Um...
You're right up against the property on this, and then you've got somebody's property on the east, if I'm looking at this right? Yeah, I was just curious, if I owned a piece of property and somebody came in and said, "Now, you can't do anything with that because of something on the other guy's property."
Yeah, actually, that is not something that I had discussed. I'm going to have to ask for some measurements to ensure that it actually goes to that property line. But if that is something that the commission is concerned about, we can either continue this to look into it, or if you're comfortable with it, we can still move it on to the board that is dependent on...
Well, I have no problem with it. It's just, I've just questioned as to the other person's property. We're forcing something on them, you know?
Yeah. So that easement is only on this plat. It isn't on that neighboring property. So the neighboring property should be...
You're only...
The, I guess, yeah, I'm not exactly sure how that would work. If someone were to come in and propose a structure at that point, judging based on the distances, I don't believe that there should be a structure within that 25 feet of that property line.
I would agree with you.
Yeah.
But it's on somebody else's property.
Mm-hmm.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Or make a comment? But there's a road there.
Yep.
So don't those guys have to give 33 feet of right-of-way for the road?
Yes, that is also actually a section line right-of-way.
Yeah. So on the east, on the west side of their property, they've got to dedicate that 33 feet, just like they have on this plat, correct?
Yes. So from what I can see, there is 30, there is 66 feet of right-of-way, but that's where this has come into a discussion with the surveyor, is that I cannot find exactly when the 33 feet was fully dedicated into the, or fully shown as a section line, because it's not on their deed, and they're not, but it's taken out for tax purposes. So that's...
Just on this plat?
Yes.
Not on the one to the east of it?
Just on this plat. The property to the east, I'm not exactly sure when 154th was improved. That's something I need to talk to the county highway department about, about the full improvement of 154th Street, because it is paved until a little bit further north, when it turns into gravel. But that's what I meant by, I'm going to need some measurements on that, because it could be that with that right-of-way, that 219, that 219 feet doesn't actually reach that neighboring property, or it's within that 25-foot easement that's required on all agriculture, or setback that's required on all agriculture property.
Well, I have no problem with it as far as that goes. I was just curious.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have another one on page 73, number nine, conditions of approval and layout plan. What does number nine, I mean, they have to jump through the hoops and go low-density or a variance?
Yes. So they chose to obtain, to apply for a variance to allow this telecom tower lot to be one acre in an agriculture zoning district, rather than try to rezone that to rural residential, or not rural residential, low-density residential.
Okay.
So they did have two options that they could have done. So instead of...
The other?
Yes.
Yep, that's all I've got.
Any... Charlie?
Thank you for helping me spin that around, because I think if they had looked at the same thing after you showed me, first off, one of the things we're not noting is that basically that there's a dotted line going through that thing. The true survey drawing is only showing about half of it. I don't know what I, my eyes aren't good enough to total up the acreage on the one.
Yeah.
You're looking at half of it, which makes a lot of difference in thinking of what you're doing to that whole area, including the section line.
Yes.
Then the other thing that I had was the 1.1 racial is already drawn in, and you've covered that with your conditions, I believe, because that doesn't meet ours. What does it call for, rather than 1.1 in the tower lot?
The, I'm sorry, could you ask that again?
On the tower lot? It's, the drawing they put in is a 1.1 on the no-build easement for falling?
Yes.
And our, it calls for more than that, doesn't it?
It's actually, the setback for the tower is 1.1 times the height, which is where we got that no-build easement from. They're doing a variance as well for...
Correct.
...tower height setback to allow the tower to be within so many feet of a property line.
All right. But then I see that you added a rule or something in here about the one that it doesn't...
The tower doesn't meet the 1.1 times the setback height of the...
Okay, that was it.
...of the proposed...
All right.
...lot lines that they are requesting.
That was it. But I do think if you saw what Megan did for me to help me, we're not, when we see some of these pictures, that's why I guess it'd be nice if they include the total acreage of the property and what we're breaking off and doing something to. Helps me mentally. I don't know that it really involves a request.
If it helps with the other commissioners, there is a remaining balance, and it goes along north here. So if I enlarge that again, to the left of this portion will be a remaining balance of this plat. This right portion is what you are seeing on this request.
There it is.
So this is the request, and there's the total property.
Do you have any questions? I can answer some. Jones Ranch.
I think we'll get to that, but right now, I think that makes a lot, that changes my thinking when I look at this over thing. And it changes questions you have. The one-acre thing, I don't know how, it would surprise me, we got the tower thing in there without doing the original thing on it. It must have been before we were doing...
That tower was permitted back in... One sec, let me see, I do have the date on here.
While you're doing that, I'm basically comfortable with what you're saying after you showed me the property and that layout. It changes my thinking about what we're looking at doing, so...
Yeah, the telecom tower is from 2007.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. We do have a speaker request form and a gentleman that wishes to speak on this.
I just was here to answer any questions. They thought I should come in. I didn't think you guys had any...
Okay.
So I can give you just what's going on, though. So the...
Can you get close to the microphone and introduce yourself?
Yep. So I was going to take out 40 acres in that cell phone lot. I'm retiring from the ranch, and a neighbor decided he wanted to buy 30 acres that already has that 10 there. And so we agreed to sell that to him, and that's why we're taking, I wanted to take that cell phone tower lot. He said he didn't have a problem with me keeping that. And then my easement goes right by there to my property if I ever build. I don't, I'm just taking some out now. I think it's like 43 acres. I don't, I'm just taking some out now. I think it's like 43 acres or something on the, uh, west side of that other lot. But yeah, everything around it's been ag, and yeah, I guess that's why we just wanted to keep it the same way. And like I say, it is connected to my property through the easement. As you can see that.
Okay, Charles Ridley? Rid, rid?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Yeah, my name is Charles Ridley. I have the, uh, property just to the north of there on, uh, Papa 154th. My concern was just, uh, I probably did not understand the certified letter. My concern was it, it stated breaking it into one acre lots for rural residential. What's, uh, what is the actual plan there? Kinda, I moved out there so I could get away from living in the city life. Kinda really wanted to keep it kinda the, the 10 acre lots in the agricultural area out there. So what was the actual plan there? Cause I don't think I, I heard it actually really discussed here on what that's gonna do.
It's, yeah, we're not planning on doing anything. So he wanted, like I said, the neighbor wanted that. He's got horses and he's got, we're gonna have a no build
Okay.
On, on, on his lot, and then I'm gonna have the other to the, uh, west of it. And I don't, I don't know if I'm gonna build down there. I just wanted to take some out to have it. It's actually gonna stay in the pasture for now, and I'm not gonna lot it up.
Okay.
If I do, if I do, I'll build, you know, I'll build.
So it's just a.
One house, one house would be on that.
So the original break was just for those two acres up there.
Oh, yeah, that's a friend of mine. So he wanted a couple extra acres. When I was taking that out, I agreed to, uh, sell that extra two acres for him. He just wanted a little bigger lot, so.
That was, that was our major concern, cause the way we read it was, like, right up there past by the cemetery, that that was all gonna be broken up.
No, and, and they just recommend putting an easement up there. That will probably never happen.
Okay.
They just recommended it so we weren't landlocked up on that little corner, cause the ranch still has some there too. And like I say, I'm not even gonna fence that out. It's still gonna be in the pasture on that, that other 43.
Thanks.
Any, any more questions from the commissioners? Chair would address a motion on item number 10.
Move to, um, um, approve comprehensive plan amendment COCA 25 dash 0006. No conditions, okay.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to approve 20, COCA 25 dash 0006. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Item number 11.
Also move to rezone CORZ 25 dash 008 from ag to rural residential.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to rezone CORZ 25 dash 0008. Any discuss, any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Item number 12.
Madam Chair, I make a motion that we accept preliminary plan COPPL 25 dash 0005 with eight conditions.
Okay, second. It's moved and seconded to, to approve COPPL 25 dash 0005 with eight conditions. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Okay, they're all approved.
Thank you.
Item number 13.
Good morning, Commissioners. Jason Thunison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item number 13 is conditional use permit COCU 25 dash 0011. It is to allow a commercial pet care facility on the subject property. The applicant is Justin Boland. He is here in the audience. If you have any questions for him. The landowner is Paul Betming. Location of the property is about one mile northwest of the intersection of Lamb Road and Old Folsom Road. It is 13.32 acres, zoned agriculture district at this time. Existing land use is vacant. Surrounding zoning, I have a correction on the staff report that I gave you. Uh, north should be light industrial, not heavy industrial. Uh, south and east is ag district, and to the west is Rapid City city limits, and it is zoned heavy industrial within the city limits. Access is off Old Folsom Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh, zoning ordinance lists seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use permit applications. They're on the screen. Got any questions on those? Here's a picture of the subject property. Again, it is vacant of any structures or utilities. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review. The highway department did request, or did respond with, uh, an approach permit is on file, uh, with them. And the approach will need to be improved to meet commercial design standards, and that is included as a condition of approval. No other objections or concerns were received. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is requesting to develop a commercial pet, uh, to include dogs and cats, a daycare facility, offering splash parks, grooming, training, and boarding. Businesses, uh, the business will also offer amenities for pet owners such as social seating, games, coffee bar, and on sale beer and wine. Nearest residence from this, um, is .35 acres, or 3.5 miles away. .35 miles away, sorry. Uh, the business plan was attached to the staff report. Uh, it was quite extensive. If you have any questions, I'll defer those to the applicant. And the proposed capacity included in that business plan was up to 75 dogs for daycare, as well as 75 boarding kennels. With that, I'll stand for any questions. Staff does recommend approval of conditional use permit COCU 25 dash 0011 with conditions.
Other questions for Jason?
Madam Chair?
Charlie?
And this is a tough one, Jason, in, in my mind. Condition number 12, quiet hours in the PUD 11 to 7. I don't think we're being realistic. If, when you get out in the countryside and you hear a dog bark, you can hear them for miles. And there's, if they house any dogs overnight, and I think they will, you're gonna hear a dog bark some. And I think we're setting them up to be a target for somebody if we leave that in there, but.
Right, the applicant does have plans to, uh, construct soundproofing within that structure, but again, I would defer to him to come up and speak to that a little bit further.
It's a, it's a strange thing, you know, even visually, lights and stuff like that, what they carry, what you can see at night. I mean, you can see somebody light a cigarette if you're on flat ground for five, six miles.
That's why, uh, part of the.
You can imagine what the sound does.
Right, and part of the recommendation of approval came into the, the fact that the heavy industrial zoning to the west,
Yes.
Light industrial to the north.
That helps.
That was all taken into consideration. This is a, an ideal location for this business in our.
Oh, I think you're, you're correct. I'm just saying, I, I just worry when I see a ruling like that. We do have people that, that look for every loophole to be unhappy with something.
Right, and that's kind of a, a common safeguard for us to include as a condition of approval, uh, for the protection of the neighborhood, so it doesn't become a nuisance.
Thank you, Jason.
Yep.
Okay, other questions?
One question. Uh, the only thing it seemed, I mean, this is well put out. The only thing that seemed a little different was this liquor thing, the booze thing. Uh, are they gonna have trouble getting a license out there?
I don't believe, uh, getting a beer and wine license is too terribly difficult. Uh, they do have similar uses like this within the city. They used to have, uh, beer in barks, I think they call it, in the mall where people would come out there and bring their, their pets, enjoy a beverage at the same time. I think it's the same concept here.
That's all I have.
Okay, can I ask a question? Um, the, the light industrial through the north, is that a place that like operates some kind of a fabrication or something during the day?
Nope, I think they just have warehouses there.
That's a warehouse? And then to the west is like gravel pit, quarry, something like that, or what is that?
Actually, the industrial park that the city annexed in.
Oh, okay.
I think that's where the, the battery manufacturing center was supposed to go at one time.
Oh, okay. So, again, these, these industrial facilities are probably only active during the day, or is there stuff going on at night too? Like in the warehouse thing?
Should be just during the day. I'm not positive. I didn't check into the uses on that property.
Okay.
I just saw that it was zoned.
Well, you know, the concern that Charlie had was dogs barking at night, and, um, you know, you might not notice it during the day if there's activity in the area, but it might be more noticeable at night, unless they are soundproofing.
Sure, yep.
Maybe you make the dogs go in at night and don't let them go.
Right, yep, and the applicant's here with his new baby for backup.
Yeah.
Somebody's answering your call.
I was gonna say, some people might complain about your baby crying too. I mean, who knows?
Well, she wanted his input too.
Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Justin Boland, uh, with Meadow Ridge Pet Lodge. Um, yeah, so the question with, um, the sound at night is, we've done extensive research. We're working with a lot of different pet facilities from across the county, or, um, country, and the quiet hours are gonna be put in place as far as like the sound is, the building is gonna be sound insulated, noise proofed. But then after, um, eight, nine o'clock at night, dogs don't go outside. From eight o'clock until, from about nine o'clock at night until about six o'clock in the morning. They found from different facilities across the country that if you have the opportunity for dogs to go out, they will make noise at night, right? And you're gonna be here, especially out in the county, where there's nothing to kinda slow it down. The one we're basing this off of and working very closely with is Paz Pet Resort in Sioux Falls. They have just as many dogs, actually a little bit more than what we're going with. They have apartment buildings that are completely surrounding them, and they haven't had a single issue because they don't allow the dogs to go outside past 9:00 PM, and they keep them inside, and then they bring them back out at 6, 7 o'clock in the morning. By not having the, um, disturbances during the night of taking dogs in and out, they actually find that the dogs maintain and are quiet and just don't make noise at night when they're not interrupted, or have the ability to go out in and out on their own, cause that's when, usually when they get in troubles, if they can go out, check out the surrounding area, hear what's going on, bark, come back inside. So by not allowing that to happen, they don't have any, actually any noise issues at all.
Any other questions? The commissioners? Chair would address a motion for conditional use permit COCU 25 dash 0011.
I'll move.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve COCU 25 dash 0011 with 16 conditions. Discussion? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, item number 14.
Okay, agenda item number 14 is planned unit development overlay COPU 25 dash 0003 to allow a center for education and visitor familiarization and to provide limited onsite training and visitor accommodation. The applicant and agent is the Institute for Creation Research. Randy Guglia is the president, and I don't see him in the audience. We're on Zoom today. Current property owner is South Dakota Children's Home Society. Location of the property is 24100 South Rockerville Road. It is 80.22 acres combined, zoned agriculture district. Existing land use is the Black Hills Children's Home. Surrounding zoning is open space northeast, south, and west. Access is off South Rockerville Road, and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, the zoning ordinance list, seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of a PUD overlay district. It's on the screen on the left. It also defers to Pennington County zoning ordinance section 510, seven criteria the planning commission may consider in their review of conditional use applications on the right. There are quite a few structures that exist on this property right now. Single-family residents, a couple light commercial buildings, tool sheds. Uh, one of those tool sheds does not have a building permit on file, so they'll have to come and get a condition, or a building permit with us. That is noted as a condition of approval. They also have a couple of onsite wastewater treatment systems and some operating licenses. There is also a conditional use permit to allow residential treatment center for children. That is the Black, or the South Dakota Children's Home. Request was sent out for interdepartmental review. Uh, there were quite a few comments that came back. The highway department said they're not opposed to this, or this development. Uh, they did say that the approaches would need to be widened to commercial design specifications and re-inspected. Emergency services had a suggestion, um, I'll defer up here to this site plan, that the applicants have included. You can see this here in green are some roads, internal roads and parking lots that they're proposing in phase one. What emergency services in the county addressing coordinator would like to see is that this road be connected to this other existing driveway, so that it's more of a loop design. From, from an emergency services standpoint, they would prefer to see that. Um, I have not spoken with the applicant to see if they'd be open to that or not. Uh, worst case, we would just have this name, this road named, so that emergency services could find it adequately. Addressing would also come with that, obviously. Environmental planner said they had a pretty significant septic system on the property at this point, but any kind of additions which they plan in this, uh, proposal would need to be run through the South Dakota Department of Ag and Natural Resources as well as our office. Staff's analysis of the request is that the applicants are requesting this planned unit development overlay in order to validate the feasibility of their intended use prior to purchasing the property. With that, staff recommends approval of planned unit development overlay COPU 25 dash 0003 with conditions.
Are there questions for Jason?
I have a question. So Jason, from what I've read here, this is like a really preliminary step for them to even consider doing this.
Exactly.
It's like their first hurdle, so they've got a lot of stuff.
Yeah, they're just trying to gauge, uh, the commission's feel on what this proposal is, and basically to see if they would get any kind of approval for this use before they would move forward with purchasing the property. Uh, they plan to add some fourplex, um, type of structures. You can see here up on the north part of the property. I have a rendering of what that would look like. Kinda hard to see on this picture, but it is a more or less a four hotel room, uh, type of structure. They'll have kitchenettes, bathrooms.
For like overnight guests, like seminars and stuff like that?
Yeah, for people attending, um, any of the seminars or any of the events that they have up there. I did include the business plan in there too. It was pretty extensive. A little bit too much for me to actually detail out in my report, so I was hoping the applicant would be here to speak on this today, but he was not. So hopefully you don't have any questions in that regard, as far as the details of what they're proposing to use that are outside of that business plan.
John, you had a question?
The children's home name, is, is that gonna go away?
Correct, yep.
So are they gonna continue with the mission with the children?
Yes, I believe they've moved that up on Highway 16 closer to Rabbit City at this point.
They're where the NAU used to be.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a big sign up there.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Jason, since this is a preliminary deal where they're going to base their financial decisions and stuff like this on pursuing commitment to give them a bid, uh, for the property, I think we ought to change number two, your condition number two, and cross out considers and the applicant connect the north and south. And the reason being is that we're kinda locking ourselves in to proceeding with this in the future. And I think we don't want considers. In other words, it's either gonna be or it's not gonna be, one or the other. And then they can adjust their bid accordingly.
Yep.
Because they seem like a really well organized group that'll know the dollars and cents to do that. That's my suggestion.
Yep, if the commission would like to do that, you can certainly change that condition.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
So I agree with, with Charlie on that number two, uh, but also I appreciate the fact that they're coming before us at this point in time, prior to the purchase, rather than coming after and then trying to have the county make adjustments and so forth.
Absolutely.
That may not be normal.
Yeah.
So, uh, this is great that they came before us before, so.
Yep, and a lot of, uh, what's being proposed here is gonna take separate permitting, um, whether it's stormwater permits, some building permits, anything to that effect. Onsite wastewater treatment system permits too, so those are all conditioned in here as well. So this isn't necessarily approving those specific aspects of development. This is just approving the use on the property.
So, follow up question? So, Jason, I didn't see anything in here that indicates that they're gonna ask for nonprofit, uh, status or non-taxable status for any portion of this.
Unfortunately, those are one of those questions that I cannot answer. Um, they have not indicated to me that they're gonna move in that direction, and I didn't see anything in the business proposal either.
Well, it's obvious that there's portions of it that couldn't be if they're gonna have motel facility and
Correct.
so forth, but just curious.
I would just say, I hope that we can get something to go through on this. That is such a beautiful facility out there, that it's a shame that it's not in use right now.
Yeah, we really feel, uh, as staff. Yeah, we really feel as staff that it fits this area. It's surrounded by Forest Service. It's kind of secluded out in the middle of the forest, so.
Are there other questions?
Can the roads handle what they're proposing? 10 cars per hour and all that sort of thing? That's not a very big road.
Yep, so we did route this out to Highway Department and they did not have any comments to that effect as far as if it would trigger a traffic impact study or anything like that.
Any other questions? Excuse me. Chair would address a motion on item number 14.
Move to approve per staff's recommendation COPU 25-0003 with 24 conditions.
Second.
Did you want to change that one?
Oh, yes, with the alteration of condition number two, drop the word considers and change connecting to connect.
Okay. Was there a second on that?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Item number 15.
Good morning, Commissioners again. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. Item number 15 is ordinance amendment OA 25-0001. For Pennington County is to amend section three land use and housing element of the Pennington County Comprehensive Plan viewed at 2040. So just a little bit of history on this. Staff has been working on this for almost a year now. We originally had proposed this to the Board of Commissioners during a planning session, the need for some of these changes in our comprehensive plan. This isn't changing the whole comprehensive plan, it's just the land use section. After this went into effect, we noticed some things that needed some change. We did have three public meetings out in the public with this. In addition to, we have a pretty robust information on the website. The Rapid City GIS was very gracious and built a tool, and I'll show that to you here in a little bit, where you can put in your address and the county and see what your current future land use is and what the proposed one is moving forward. That is going to be a separate agenda item because it's actually a zoning ordinance change. So that will come later once the comprehensive plan amendment changes are approved. But staff did, specifically Jason, went through every single parcel in the county in our future land use and looked at what it was currently as a future land use and proposed changes based on some pretty significant factors, and that's in the memo. But we looked at existing and anticipated infrastructure, the dead end road systems, topography, special flood hazard areas surrounding land use, and then some new zoning districts. So we went through those very specifically and made changes to them based on those criteria. So hoping that our future land use maps should require some insignificant changes in the future that some of the things where we do recommend denial based on infrastructure, that we've already taken those into consideration in our future land use maps. Some other things that we took into consideration, and it did come specifically more from this board during hearings and some concerns from this Planning Commission, is that we're going to request that a one acre minimum lot size for low density residential district instead of that half an acre lot size. I know that this Planning Commission had had concerns on that when these would come forward. We felt that that was probably a more appropriate lot size for that because that's what we see in the more dense areas in the county where you would need a well and a septic. And the minimum lot size for a well and a septic is one acre. So we are recommending that change for the low density residential district. And then also changing some nomenclature in our zoning districts, specifically the suburban residential district and the urban residential district, changing them to be more consistent with SRD1 and SRD2. Those are consistent with other communities, specifically like Rapid City uses an LD1 and an LD2, and they have similar connotations where there's very minimal changes. That urban residential district, as you know, has created some kind of concern when people request a change to those. They assume that you're going to have a three to five story apartment building with that, and that is simply not the case. The only significant changes between urban residential and suburban residential is a 20-foot front yard setback in lieu of a 25-foot front yard setback. And that it does allow a four, up to a fourplex without a conditional use permit, but any apartment complexes or anything would still require a conditional use permit. So it's just changing the nomenclature in that to be more consistent with what those districts actually are. And then the other major one was combining the commercial district and the highway service district. We looked at those districts and the uses were not very dissimilar. Not only that, the highway service district required it to a butt to a highway. Well, a commercial district needs to a butt to an arterial or any kind of major roadway anyway. Most commercial districts need the traffic counts to actually be viable anyway. So we didn't really see the reason to have two specific, two different districts for that. The only big change with the highway service district is it did allow amusement structures like zip lines, roller coasters as a use by right. But we're going to remove those and require a conditional use permit. With some discussions with our fire administrator, he did have some concerns on safety and making sure that those are getting inspected. And in order to have some oversight on that, that would be better as a conditional use. And then with the combining of the commercial district and the highway service district, we are looking at creating a neighborhood commercial district so we can have some of those light impact, minimal impact commercial districts like small, like office buildings, you know, more neighborhood in nature. We have medical offices, barber shops, salons, things like that, maybe small like retail stores. I think in our zoning ordinance, we're proposing them to be at less than 2,000 square foot of footprint. So it would allow some light commercial districts in those areas. And then one of the other major ones is adding the planned unit development district back. The reason for it is we're really seeing a lot of requests for mixed use development and mixed use structures where we really don't have a good avenue to do that without doing a PUD. In the past, PUDs, we feel as staff, current staff, were not used appropriately where they were more used for residential development or in instances where they couldn't get other zoning, so they would just zone it to a PUD. So we did develop a zoning district, and you guys will see that as well, that are more suited to actual, the mixed use commercial. So we want to bring that back. And so if it's more appropriate just having residential zoning, it would not be appropriate as PUD, so you will not see those. Those are going to be true mixed use developments. And also we're seeing a lot of mixed use structures where you would have commercial zoning in the, on one level, and then some residential zoning on the top level. And we just don't have anything in our zoning ordinance right now to address that. So the planned unit development would do that. So with that, staff is recommending approval, but I did want to show you this tool, just so if you get questions and you can see. So this is a pretty neat tool that the Rapid City GIS built for us. So if you put in an address in the county, just trying to think what would be a good one.
You can put mine in. I'm in town, though.
Michael, do you, or just do you have a, what I can do?
At the house, yeah. My old Hill City Road.
So we can access this now?
Yes.
Is this linked to Rapid Map? No. To separate?
It is, but not to the, not to the current one. You would actually specifically have to go to this tool.
You can't go to the old, the Rapid Map and?
Right, you'd have to go to this tool on our website. But it does have, you know, you could go to certain areas and see where things have changed. So you can see that these areas had changed, and those areas changed based on the one acre requirement and the fact that that's actually what those are being used as right now. So when Jason went through these, these parcels are being used as a low density residential district. And the lot sizes match that. So, but you can put in a tax ID or an address, and then you can see how different areas have changed. The biggest changes, in all honesty, are in the Rapid Valley area. It was a low density residential district. We did change that to a suburban residential district mainly because the Rapid Valley Sanitary District did increase their district boundaries. And with their drilling of the new well, they do have the ability to serve that area at a higher density. So those are going from this low density residential, and it'll, let's see, hopefully it'll come up here, to the suburban residential. So you can see the differences. And that's to address some of the changes that are going on with Box Elder and the Rapid Valley Sanitary District. So we based all of the changes on the zoning districts based on what we saw infrastructure wise, like where development is going, what we see in changes in the development, and dead end road systems and special flood hazard areas.
These are in effect now?
So these are in effect right now, and this is what we're proposing with the change. So this will not change effectively until the comprehensive plan has to change. And then you'll see a zoning ordinance amendment that actually changes the future land use map to the new future land use. Which, and here, too, you'll see that there's some commercial district. This is Twilight, where we would like to see Twilight eventually go through and have some commercial. This is neighborhood commercial. So this is like a church. A lot of these churches, we moved to neighborhood commercial because those are appropriate zonings for those. So their future land use would actually be what they're being used for. So they'd match what they're being used for.
Madam Chair, are we on questions?
Sure.
Can't compliment you guys enough for living up to your namesake for starting because you're the Planning Department. And I think this is just excellent planning. I can see hours of conversations and arguments took place in putting some of these suggestions together. I only had found, and I still disagree, we talked for years about this, PUD, I'm glad to see it back in. What, 2020, we took it out, whatever. The only place I still disagree, and this happened after the Rapid City flood, I think there's a place for a PUD that's just commercial and separate from mixed uses. And the reason being, after Rapid City flooded, and I don't know how many of you are aware, but we actually had two PUDs. One was financed with community development money around Rapid City, and there was a private one that was through the Chamber of Commerce. It was members of the Chamber of Commerce that went in and did a, I'm sure Kevin, you dealt with them through the years, too. They, they put together a nonprofit that was what, Rapid City Community Development? Was that the name of it?
I think so.
And I think there's places for that. So to take whole areas and make them commercial for future development. And so that, and I think we want to tell them in advance what we expect from them. So that's why I would have a separate commercial PUD. And then the only other question I had, and you and I spoke about it, is where churches fit in all of this. Because churches don't necessarily stand financially to be able to, maybe they can't buy 10 acres or whatnot. They're in a position where they're starting small, and they, they might in fact take their piece of property first and still have their church somewhere else. And that was what I was mentioning there. Churches, I think, are kind of a special category that you gotta look at. Thank you.
And we do allow them, and they are going to be recommended as a use by right in neighborhood commercial and commercial. Because churches are neighborhood commercial, those are typically in community areas. So that is going to be a new zoning district, and that is one of the, so the smaller ones, like you had spoke about with the smaller lot size, would be able to be a neighborhood commercial.
What about the commercial only PUD? See, I think you guys could come up with good thinking where this had developed. Both of them turned into very good parks. And they were what, way back in the 70s, they put them together? Actually, those, the private one actually went and had to spend money to develop their own corporation to do it. And they, they did a wonderful job.
I think the commercial one went into effect already in 73.
Did it?
Yeah. Because some of the federal dollars ended up having to be tied to that.
And then Rapid City had their own, which was a community development dollars that came from.
And I don't know when that was.
Thank you. Because I know they kind of competed against each other, even though they were both, one wasn't government related, but it was nonprofit.
Brittany? What mechanism is in place to keep this updated?
So right now, staff, once a rezone goes into effect, we go in and update the parcel information, and that won't change. We'll still have to do that. There are some things that we're working on, on proposing a different software and going through a different software for building permits that's going to be more user friendly and more citizen friendly and more transparent. That does have Rapid Map built into it, so it's an immediate change. You'll see those changes. So that's something that we're working for towards the future through the budgeting process and things as well. So we're trying to move forward in all of this, more transparency, more of these things, more of these tools being available to citizens, developers, surveyors, engineers, things like that.
Good. So. So those systems, you're working on linking them and have a system in play, a process in place to update stuff. That's, that was my question.
We would like to eventually have it to the point where you can click on a parcel, see all the building permits, see all the CUPs and things like that. So realtors, developers, they would have all of that information available because not everyone works eight to five. You know, we know some people work earlier in the morning, some people work late at night. Kevin knows realtors work whenever they need to, so it could be weekends, it could be nights. And having that information available and more transparent, that's where we're really working towards as an office that we would really like to get to that point. So we're right now digitizing all of our files, scanning everything, trying to get them uploaded and digitized so we can do that, so.
Wow, good, thank you.
Other questions?
Yes, you removed ag from some of the designations in here. What does that do in reality?
It doesn't, it's just a future land use. So it just means that if they wanted to subdivide, they'd still have to rezone, but they wouldn't have to do the comp plan amendment. If we did remove ag and put it at Ranchet or Rural Residential, it's because that's what the requests and how people are starting to zone. Or the infrastructure is there to allow those types of zoning districts to go down to those five acres or three acre lots, so.
Also, just to kind of conversely say what you're saying, there are some of these parcels were taken out of residential zoning districts. You'll see here, if you can look at the screen, this area particularly because it's floodway. A lot of the area throughout the valley that used to be low density residential, you'll see is also ag now. And that's because we have that hazard area that goes through this portion of the valley. So just wanted to note that as well.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Chair would address a motion on ordinance amendment OA 25-01.
Move to approve ordinance amendment OA 25-001 as proposed by staff.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve this, this item? Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Executive session is not needed today. County Board report.
The Board of Commissioners concurred with the Planning Commission's recommendations from the May 27, 2025 Planning Commission meeting.
Items from the public, we don't have any public remaining, so items from the staff.
Just the building permit reports, we're staying pretty consistent with the number of permits in the office. I just did like a five-year put together kind of for the budget cycle. And in the last five years, we have issued 660 building permits for single-family residences, which is pretty significant, I believe. But we are, we were kind of peaking a little bit, and we're kind of leveling out now. We are leveling out to the point where it's still above what it was in the prior five years, but.
If there's any questions? Questions? Items from the membership? Chair would address a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Do it. Do it, do it, do it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Thank you.